...to the order Monday, August 6, 2018. The Chair for what?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for its citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who have all come? Welcome. Mr. Casey?
President.
Mrs. Kennedy? Mr. Duncan?
President.
Mr. Warren?
President.
Mr. Lappi?
Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Loleson?
Mr. Gredik?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Dixon?
President.
Thank you.
Okay, athletics and stadiums director Casey Dean, how many?
I'm ready for what he needs to say. Just have a question about an update as to where we're at in the preparation for the fall season. I know we talked this spring about reorganizing the way we operate as far as potential volunteers instead of paid at one page per hour. Do we have an update to say?
May I speak now, Dr.?
Sorry, Mr. Casey.
We have an update about the start of the athletic season as far as we discussed potentially eliminating paid workers and maybe volunteers in other issues as far as...
Right, we did. We had an athletic council meeting last week and we talked about the plan that we put together with the A.D.s back in the spring about their self varsity competitions, limited net only to league play, and freshman level competition, just league play and local exhibition. So, we're going to try to cut down the travel and save costs for home events only. We are required to have home scorekeepers, statisticians, of that nature visiting. We don't need to, so they will not be part of the team, the staff, to get paid. They want to do it on a voluntary basis. Pretty much very similar, we just reinforced on what we talked about in the spring.
And do we ticket takers have brought up as a change ticket takers? Or is that something you have to ensure that individuals are standing? Do you get paid for that?
We have our, yeah, we still have it for varsity football games, yes. We still have it.
It was just a pause. Yeah, okay.
Also the I.T.V., there was film and games filming. There were a lot of people who were making some of that if we not paid the I.T.V. volunteers. Kind of look at every single aspect of that.
For the home competition, again, for the home competition, they will probably be paid for that, but away competitions, they won't, which they've always been paid for both. But hey, you cut out the, you know, the team from away. If they do it, they're going to have to do it on a voluntary basis.
I think savings would be fine out, obviously the way of the home game also. I think it's not fair for us to make cuts down the non-athletic, so most we can do is volunteer hours if some of those are fun and...
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
So, our first discussion is on R.F.P.s. You know, we have a general counsel, a labor counsel, special ed counsel, engineer, architecture, and then salary benefits administration. Those are, you know, those are the things that we've been discussing. So, in April of this year, the board passed a resolution, a timeline to fit out special ed firms, many of which had not been fit out in Scranton district for quite some time if ever. The timeline started, we actually did do a R.F.P. for position services back in June and we did that in July, and then now we need to send a R.F.P. for the services mentioned so that we can vote on September 10 when we have our next voting meeting. We, in July, had the R.F.P.s that Mr. Kretsch from the F.M., Mr. Lattke, your business manager, worked on, that goes on a Google Doc so that the board can take a look at those and make some comments. It seemed like we had a lot of comments and determined that we should discuss the language in person. So, we can take it off.
Can we ask Mr. Gretchen to be here to answer any more questions since you received a lot of those? So, I guess those that make suggestions, I don't know how we solve those questions.
Yeah, so, one that kind of kept popping up in all of these with a slight variation was the qualification requirements. So, we don't have all of them front of us. I know for sure that it was the labor, excuse me, the general counsel, R.F.P. that there was language that said that the law firm could not have any business with the city of Scranton. I'm not sure why that is in there. It doesn't seem like we should be excluding firms unnecessarily. If there were to be a conflict of interest between the law that we determine, if the law firm had conflict of interest, I think we probably wouldn't hire them or put some sort of parameters on it. With these R.F.P.s themselves, I don't want us to be excluded as potential bidders. I want as much talent and the flex of these positions as we can.
Well, the response to that, and you certainly will have that opportunity because the attorneys are individuals that I would assume the board and administration would like to interview in that process. But you have a contractual relationship with the Scranton, they collect taxes, and in most cases when you have that kind of relationship with an organization, you don't want them to have, be conflicted if you have issues that might impact that contractual election. And that's why I put those, those cabbages in there. And it's not that they can't do the business with the city, but it's just that they, the idea of the A.F.P., if they were the primary representative of the city and the primary representative of the school, you know, where do they fall when the mission comes up? And what happens if we select the entity that lets that? And you definitely hire another small firm if an individual decided to represent the city in that kind of case. So, that's, that was my thinking. Now, again, I defer, that's, that's something that, again, we can go over when we interview that. These R.F.P.s are left open for a wide variety. What you're going to get is a response that they've been through this before. You're going to get, you know, experienced school-related firms, and they've been through it before, they know what to present, and they're going to come at you with different kinds of proposals. There's certain listed criteria, but it's not, you know, again, what you're going to get is a lot of P.R.R. stuff, you're going to get a lot of input from the kinds of, how the representation they do. And that's what we have to look at when we get proposals. My goal is to raise money as possible, you know, for your sake, so that we can take a look at, you know, different levels of representation, different, sorry, different fees, and, you know, to make the boards most comfortable with their representation.
So, that same space, and I think it was the architecture and engineering pieces, that said the city of Scranton, it said Board of Education. What was that? Said that there couldn't be business with the Scranton School Board of Education? I wasn't sure.
I must have missed something.
Okay, so I wasn't sure whether that was individual number?
No.
So, now, I have a question on architecture. So, we can do two separate R.F.P.s for both services, however, I have seen it where you can do just the engineer, and the engineer would, you would have one contract with the engineer, and they would self-contract out to the project.
And we would leave that open, again, this is, again, this is leaving this open for you to choose, because in all times that you're referring, you don't necessarily need an architect for a project, or an engineer supplies, you know, if you might do a small enough project or the code only requires sign off by an engineer. But again, you know, it's always good to have at least, you know, an architect as a reference. Now, if you would like just to have the engineer and say, okay, let that person do the choosing, that's one thing, but you might want to upfront do that choosing. So, that's, again, we're leaving this open.
I sort of make it as though everyone gets a proposal such as...
My experience, you know, the first thing I did after I came out of the classroom was I would say purchasing specification. And I always told people, you know, I can buy your Cadillac and I could buy your Volkswagen. But in this case, we were talking about services, we might leave it open, we get as many proposals as possible so that we give you the opportunity to look and choose and evaluate based upon the proposal we get. Obviously, we're going to be throwing out ones that are too expensive or, you know, much more expensive than what's happening now in terms of, you know, cost of the service. But, you know, in terms of skills and numbers of attorneys that can service you for, and it might be one firm that does the special ed and the general counsel and the other thing. If that, you know, we get the right firm in and it's the right boss and they have the right team, but that's, this leaves that open.
And their parameters will decide how that happens.
Yeah, yeah.
There is a big sentence. There is one sentence, though, and you let me write to this point. In the general legal counsel R.F.Q., under intent, there is a sentence which states the engagement would not include activities related to special education issues or employee negotiations, areas that will be addressed in a certain time.
And again, that gives you the choice. If a firm comes and gives you a proposal on the general and also gives you one on the special ed, then it gives you the choice to say, okay, you're going to be appointed for both, but individual contracts. So, that's where we, you know, we are.
So, lawyers, would you interpret that to mean what it should, I don't...
Yeah, my intent there was not to, you know, to, some firms don't have a special ed specialist, and you don't want to be, you know, saying, oh, well, if we're doing these school district things, you know, we better not do, you know, we better not do school districts because we don't have a special ed specialist. So, the idea is, you know, I would expect, I would expect that we will have some firms submit to with a response to the different areas of services. Some may just submit one and say, well, cover all three of them. But that's, again, that's a choice for after me as we evaluate. So, I tried to give you as much, much spacier as possible to get as many of the proposals for the, from, you know, regional, I mean, there are some school district attorneys that don't attend board meetings. There's, you know, they, we're appointing a firm and they don't, they don't show up at board meetings. Well, that's something you've chosen to do and it's, you know, your comfort level is that. So, you know, that's something that's required of this engagement. But, you know, so I would expect that some of the firms that have more expertise, I'll say the southeast, they won't be fiddling on this because one of the criteria is to come to work.
So, I had a couple of process questions about advertising and then how the selection process. So, how do we send these out and how do we make sure that we do get it out to the board?
Well, we're going to scour the phone book and send a lot of mouth, you know, unrequested proposals.
Right, it also goes publicly.
Yeah, and then it's going to be in the newspaper. Yeah, certainly. And with, what happens in today's day and age is when it's in the newspaper, it gets picked up by services and then they circulate it. So, you sort of get a, an additional boost of advertisement because it's not just your local business advertising, it might be, it's probably not your regional thing, because they pick it up and that happens with, I'm sure, because you still have found that out with construction contracts and things like that, because they have the services that pick it up. You know, they're in it for profit too. They, you know, get something from the vendor that they're doing with their firms, but it'll be out there.
Could we use LinkedIn or something like that, that you have professionals that maybe just doesn't really get, raise the bar, professional or start getting things out on LinkedIn?
Possibility. I've not used that before. I mean, I'm using, and they're not in that capacity, but it could be useful.
Yeah, and then for the selection process, so, you know, we're used to the personnel process where the educators, the professionals are determined their recommendation as personal, then you can get a recommendation. For the services that we're looking at now, the board works really closely with the general counsel, for example. So, I know I would like to see more of the process than we would in the normal personnel hire, so how, how do we think about that?
Yeah, what is the board's role?
Well, the idea would be we would gather them, we would list them, we would look into a chart on the various services, and then the administration would give you a recommendation of four to five, half a dozen or whatever, of ones that you might want to look at and, you know, provide feedback. They're obviously wanting to live on that list, but, you know, it goes with the process that way. And then, again, I would expect that you would choose something of this nature.
The other piece that I had was the conflicts of interest piece. I think that we could add some more detail in terms of what that looks like. You know, the city's been having an issue with some nonresponsiveness on some of their R.F.P.s, so I would want to see people list, you know, over list things that they think might not make it relevant. I'd like to see them put campaign donations to board members or any past, things like that. So, if there's language that we could add to the conflicts to beef up that piece of their response, that would be a good idea.
That was my question, as long as you're not excluding anyone from bidding. That was my only question, mostly, as long as you're not going to close bids out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it doesn't prohibit anybody, it's fine.
All right, I have more comments and questions for you, Mr. Gretchen. So, on the architect and engineering, it said it's preferable to have experience in the educational field. I think that was for the architect and, but both had something in there where it was specific to education, and I just didn't know if that was standard for engineering.
It is pretty much, especially with the architect, because you want to make sure the architect is going in and if they're doing a project and it has to do with developing the school or designing the school, certainly want to make sure that it will be involved to the administration, the teachers, you know, the daily staff, you know, even the cafeteria, if you're with the company. So, that's the kind of thing that, that's directly at, it's almost not, again, you want to see if they've done the school building before. The other thing is, you know, someone like me can best, can better check the references that way. If, because I, you know, know people in the business and know, you know, who you're dealing with, business administrators or whatever, to see if this had issued, you know, you know, wants change, change orders when you have to, you know, have to develop a project or whatever, so that's, that's the thing there is.
Does that exclude them? Or is that language excluding them? Is that, you know, someone that says, go to the hotel, and that, you know, look into that?
Not necessarily, or just, you know, again, it's just a preference, that's all. You know, you will take, give a reference, yes, with the first, I mean, that's a stupid question.
Are we looking at a specific timeframe, like, to, for any donations? Or are we saying from whenever you, you know, started, maybe six, six years or seven?
No, I don't think so. I don't know, whatever would be the relevant.
Well, we're not, I think, a broker, it might be a couple of years.
Because I want to see somebody, you know, donating to somebody back in 1975.
That's it, it's not, that doesn't...
Ten years or something.
Maybe plenty of us.
Yeah, like the, 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 the.
We could go back a little farther than that, but, yeah.
They're not voting.
I know, I know, but, ten years.
Well, let's add, let's add anything, any, any business done with any, like, family businesses or anything like that, like, I'd like to see that system as well.
Yeah, exactly, it's the same, like, ten years, donations, family business partnerships and things like that.
Okay, any other questions?
One, we're having one more. We spoke last month about the tax status of vendors. I think it would be good if we had language in here, as we talked about putting into contracts themselves and saying that, you know, applicants must be prepared to show that they're up to date with their city and local taxes, city and school district taxes, or something of that nature. I don't know, that could be something for the contract, but I...
That's part of the contract.
Right, I didn't know if it was something we put in R.F.P. too.
Because, yeah, you haven't done business with the discipline, so they may not have the, usually they have, you know, Scranton business operations, like, places.
Oh, yeah, this would be more, more for vendors that have, that already work in.
Yeah.
So, you're saying it's a contract, right, and then an R.F.Q. right?
Right, exactly.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gretchen. Thank you. So, we expect those to go out shortly and then...
I'll go to your work on these tomorrow morning, and we'll soon have them going out tomorrow, I guess, but, you know, just wanted to make a quick comment and, and we're ready to walk, and work on it tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next is to adopt the 2019 preliminary questions.
Do you have any? Mr. Lappi has a question to share, or I find a question. Mr. Lappi?
Yes, on July 19th, we published, and the board was giving a preliminary budget, a proposed preliminary budget for 2019, showing a deficit of, well, $11,464,000. Since that time, we, you know, we kind of prepared a more thorough summary of it line by line by object, the three-year trends that was requested by the board. There has been, other than one change, which we found out about today, and it is, it is a significant one, no other information has changed since July 19th. However, part of the goal was to follow the proposed Act one timeline that was set by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, being that we must adopt the proposed preliminary budget if the board would like to consider applying for exceptions to exceed the Act one index. Correspondence we received today is that the preliminary budget should include the Act one increase, which at current analysis is 3.6%, plus an estimate of what we feel may be eligible for exceptions. Now, we can apply for exceptions for special ed related increases, pension related increases, and school construction and grant other debt. So, and to meet that requirement, we've worked this afternoon to kind of estimate what that is. The Act one index of 3.6% would allow the district, without the need to apply for exceptions, to raise millage above 4.62 million, just over 4.62 million. The next step would be to determine what we thought our exceptions would qualify. We looked at special ed and pension. That total dollar amount we factored into would be almost 1.6 million, $1,591,261. That amount that we could potentially levy for, divided by what a mil on average increases would be an additional millage increase of about 5.2%. So, in total, the resolution for tonight has been modified since this week, that we'll have new language to state that what the new millage would be, which would allow us to apply. I confirm a P.D.E. that this is strictly only to determine what our allowable tax rate could be at a maximum, does not lock you into any, does not lock the district into any tax levy before December 31st. So, you will see that, that's changed from the resolution that you received in fact. But again, it allows us to pursue, to determine what that value may be. We estimate the Act one index exceptions to be just shy of 1.6 million. That still needs to be approved by Pennsylvania Department of Education. This would be the first step which allows us to proceed to start applying to that.
Do we have data?
Yes.
Sorry, just a clear question. Is the 1.6 million, the 4.6 mils, is roughly a raise of that much, or raised that 1.6 million? Are those two figures attached?
So, now, the total, if we were to exercise all options, currently right now, the estimated total would be just shy of $3 million to $2,988,000. Which would bring your July 19 deficit of $11,464,000 down to $8,476,000.
But to get to that $3 million, what would, if, I just want to consider, we're not, we're very far away from deciding what it's going to want to do, but with that $3 million, what would that, would that look like in terms of taxes?
In terms of a tax increase, well, it would be 9.895 mils, which is the full Act one index, which is 3.6% plus the calculation of the exceptions that we would possibly qualify for.
The 2.9 million, would that be actual collection or is that...
That was adjusted for what our 2017 estimated as set value, applied by our millage, less our property gain money, which comes off the top of that versus, so our adjusted levy and what our actual collections were, which again are, are unaudited, which is just shy of like 86%.
Is this the 2.9, is that 86%?
Yeah, it's reduced for that, correct.
So, this is the...
Yeah. So, the next step, again, I think it's important to really talk about correspondence we received today, is this needs to be included, so when I, if you choose, consider, so when I put it into Pennsylvania budget system, it will trigger the fact that, yes, your taxes have exceeded what your index max is, and it's going to tell us by how much. And then, my next step would be is to apply for those exceptions, which preliminary estimates, again, I just mentioned, is just shy of 1.6. And for special ed increases, increases.
Is this something that the board has done in the past, at some point, or...
I have to go back and check, I'm not exactly sure.
Not, not since you were bringing it up?
Yeah. I think this, this step, this process, this timeline that we're following is probably, it's probably something new for us.
It is.
We did it, but it is a little different.
Yeah.
My recollection is, we had, the polls I keep, like we're doing tonight in form resolution, that we have the ability to do it, not necessarily that we're going to do it. And we had to do it by a certain time, not even on this time, it's maybe like three years ago.
Yeah.
But I know what you're saying, new pieces added to it are different, because we have to identify exactly what it's for, correct?
Correct.
Versus last night.
And in, I received correspondence this afternoon at the 4:00 or 5:00 P.M. that all this is doing is providing the ability to increase your tax over the index to the rate allowable by any referendum exceptions that are approved. It does not lock in the millage for a final budget, right?
Is this something, Mr. Gretchen, you've seen other distress districts do?
Yeah, this is a requirement of that, and that's interesting, and we've probably in the past, just passed a resolution that says we're not going to exceed the index, which means you wouldn't be eligible for the exceptions. You, in this case, let's say you just go to that 3.6%, you wouldn't be eligible for above that. Mr. Lappi's just giving you, you know, the option for, you know, we're all dead in the future. So, this is the recommended course of action to get us going on, you know, how we proceed with this budget, we see that it's, you know, how does the city and the board got to work together to get the working to be, so, this is, but this is Act one required, you know, so typically districts are doing this in January, because of the fiscal year difference. You know, here we are in August, you know, with a lot of different districts.
Yeah, we want to give ourselves all of the options. Yeah, we want to give ourselves all of the options we can.
Right.
Do you have any other questions? We can move to resolution. To the members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Trenton.
No, 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 this, we're at the meeting, especially, that's...
Oh, next, sorry, next. I thought we were just getting around to it. All right, discussion. Okay, and then the second piece is triggering the budget transfer for Policy 612.
Hi, yes, what I'd like to do for the 2018 budget is do a budget transfer from our 1,400 function, which is in other programs area, to our, to the 1,800 function, which is specifically for pre-K. We receive pre-K funding through Title I. The 1,800 function is the appropriate reporting account. Based on the numbers that were presented in the 1,400 function, there is an excess which is related, you know, it's because the short, prior to the account flow change at the state level, it used to be voted there, that was the reporting area, and this is just simply a transfer, it is not amend the total budget at all, it's just shifting from one area to the next, so we're reporting our federally funded pre-K expenses.
The next resolution is the bill list. I saw something on here that I thought maybe Superintendent, maybe you could see if you could get taken off for us, the Chamber of Commerce membership fee, maybe the Chamber might spring for donating that to us. You think so, right? And then the exception bill list is the second piece. There's something on here with the Special Olympics program, there's a reimbursement, I don't know...
Yes, Ms. Gina Letz, address that. The Special Olympics program reimbursement.
For unified sports?
Yes.
What we have is a unified, we have a representative that is sponsored by the PIAA Unified Sports Program, which focuses on having a parallel track and field program during the same time of track and field season for special needs students, and if regular students want to take it at a lesser degree, two practices a week. Some local school districts were going to have the same program and maybe a few competitions during the course of the year. The Unified Sports was obligation was for everything as far as uniforms, equipment, and coach's salary. The only thing that we were responsible for is if we wanted to hire a referee, which I believe for those needs, they were only going to hire two referees, and transportation. And at that point, Ms. Cartagno, who was our special ed coordinator, along with Ms. Oshinsky and Ms. Jeanette, said from the Special Olympics funding that we had raised over the course of the year, they were be committed on taking and paying for that bill for our kids. So, that was the situation. We did have, our, West Grant High School did have a person of interest to take the head coaching position for the Unified Sports Program. We did not have applicant for West Grant High School, but I am in contact with Mr. Bovino, who is a representative, to explain the program. Hopefully, he wants to have it up and running for next three years, so we propose to put a position for West Grant High School next year. And keep it going and make it, you know, continue, continue the program.
Yes, we received the funding, and we're acting as a pastor to the individual that provided it.
Is that PIAA double A or something like that?
I think it's...
It's the unified...
It's the Unified Sports Program that's sponsored through PIAA.
But there's no budget impact to the Trenton School.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we discussed that at West Community last night.
I guess the other piece of this, just moving, Mr. Labrie, I think you've been doing a lot of other things, but the legal breakdown would be helpful for...
Yes, I apologize, I will send it out tomorrow morning.
That's great. Okay, lots of like the tax, treasures, report, repository sales, anything on those? So, also a budget guidance, I wanted to check in Attorney Manora on that Ecollect piece, I don't know if you've been able to work with Mr. Fox and Mr....
I did get a proposal recently from Ecollect, and there's been a lot of, I talked to Attorney Alborn, he's been on vacation, back and forth, so we haven't gotten together, we got him around, I hope.
Yeah, so it would be great, be great to, if we could get something to consider for the August 27 work session, it would be nice to start, start the year fresh with having that.
Maybe, I might, I assume we have additional repository sales, we need to add that to needs repositories?
Yeah, we could have.
Is there anything else, Director? How many?
I'm just going to go through these to see if anybody has anything to update Technology Committee, Director Lash, any, anything to report, education director, Senator Neddy, anything to report?
How Superintendent, did you have coming updates on education, science, if you mind, or...
We were going to have a full report ready for you for our next work session and our preparation for getting schools ready. One thing I would say is that our summer school has been completed. We had a very successful online summer school, and the savings that we had hoped to realize, will realize during the summer. We had to dig into some of those savings, because there were two, two or three positions that we had to add over the summer, so we had to add two special education teachers, one EL teacher, and some registration support, which came to be $6,517 over our original costs. So, we feel like we did very well in bringing in the savings that we had hoped to bring in by doing our online summer school. So that would balance with your, with the budget sheet.
But the presentation, is that on the work session night, August 37?
We usually like to wait till school starts, so the meeting night, and every division will report out to you, the order that has taken place over the summer and the preparations for getting school pulled together for day one SSD. So, I think you'll enjoy the report, and I know the staff is working very hard over the summer to try to pull all the pieces together, so we will be ready for a disruption after our safety.
Director McAndrew, anything else?
Nothing at this point.
So, would you say, Director Lash, anything?
Doctor, anything?
Only that, we are, we do have something on the agenda.
That question's...
I didn't see here...
Under personnel.
Under personnel, to appoint a district safety officer per Act 44. So, that is under personnel.
Agent Governmental, Director Duffy?
Yes, I have a few things. Firstly, we've gone to Senator Blake and Representative Flanagan for additional funding like we did last year. They did a lot, additional funding last year, we're hopeful to see much larger number than we got last year. I think that they're working very hard on that, they haven't gotten anything solidified, but I did reach out to both of them today, and they're continuing to work on it. There is a huge disparity that still exists between our districts and our district. And one thing that we've worked on, I've worked on a little bit over the summer, and I've gotten the blessing of both the state senator and the state representative to go forward on the case, and help me a little, Director Goodman helped me a little bit with this. We're the only Class 2A city in the state, I know a lot of people in the audience may know that, some may not. That does separate us a little bit, and it does give us the ability to ask for things that other districts and cities can't ask for. Being that there's such a disparity, we're going to try to create a bill, it's the Class 2A City School District Funding Act 2019, so we're going to go forward and try to make this funding, rather than having to ask every single year until the fair funding quarter of six catches up, we're going to try to get this bill to pass through, it's a monumental task. Unfortunately, a lot of politics plays into it, however, there may have been times where, as a Class 3A city, that certain districts were given certain monies over the past forty, fifty years, and Class 1A city like Philadelphia in particular has definitely gotten other things that other cities haven't gotten. So, we just want to try to bring that to light and move forward. That way, being a 2A city, you know, piggyback this effort, the, at least the representatives and senators will know that this is for us in particular, however, that does single us out, and we have to get representatives from other areas far away from West Grant to care about it, but, however, I think numbers just hammered that home, and they've done it for Erie, and I don't see why we're much different. We have a better argument every sense of word than Erie had, and they do it for them. So, that's all I have, hopefully, we're going to move forward for that, that's not going to be an issue. We're going to get everything together, the board can approve it, we're going to send it to our legal, we have to send it to them, they send it to their legal, so it's a long way from happening, and we're hopeful to do this for the 2019 year. That's all I have.
Thank you, Director. Labor Relations, Director Schuster?
Yeah, I know there's some recent grievances that the administration brought with the S12, to see what you hear, is it a scandal or is it...
I received some of those, sadly, and as always, I will hit scale with this one and do a work on that.
Thank you. Policy legislation with federal programs, Director Goodman? Congratulations, everyone. Director Casey, personnel?
Yeah, we'll have a resolution to approve personnel board, which will do retirements, assignments, and drug offenses, and reservations, and we'll have a discussion, a possible resolution to the district safety officer per Act 44, to my director. Do I just go with basically the act states?
Yeah, pretty much the act tells us that every school district must appoint a safety officer. With that, they have outlined certain requirements that the safety officer must ensure that the district is doing. One of the things is that with our monthly drills, one of those drills can, must be an evacuation drill, there has to be staff development around safety throughout the school year, and we are going to appoint our safety officer, hopefully, on my recommendation to the board, and we, this summer, have begun to do a lot of the things required, and will continue to do so throughout the school year. And one important thing about safety that the bill does state is that safety now is an exception for executive session, so we may discuss safety in executive session for obvious reasons.
Just to piggyback on that, that's found in the act, that was in addition to the act when they passed the additional safety monies. It's not part of the Sunshine Act, but it is an exception. And of course, you can think about it in some sense. When we're talking about bulletproofs, if there are any bulletproofs from the general body.
Are we pursuing safety grants that have been initiated?
Yes, we are. And again, we'll have an update for you to let you know how well we did this summer, and what some of the monies are being used for. Mr. Brazil will have a total update on the safety initiatives that have been implemented this summer.
Thank you.
In fact, you may have noticed that we now have a sign-in sheet up down at the front desk. There used to be one there, where people came into the building, signed in, as they do in all of our schools, and that is part of the Safety Act. And so, now we've implemented it in this building, and people who get to the building, sign in, and that's one thing that is in this building, we've added to one of our schools.
Public Rela-, do you have anything else? Public Relations, Director Goodman?
Only that, in our July, I was going to say, 26 pack of Hunter period, we got some good information about some energy programs, and here for a reason, you don't want to steal your thunder, that's going to be part of the report.
Yes, we were going to, we were going to report all of that again, and it is on your phone news.
Yes, it's nice to see happy things on the book. Yes, thank you.
Purchasing, Director Duffy?
Nothing at the start.
Building new grounds, Director Campbell?
Yes, very shortly, we'll have a resolution rewarding fire extinguishers and suppression days.
Ms. President, I would like for Ms. Gina Letz, at this point, to provide the board with an update on boundary exceptions, if that would be a covering.
That's fine.
Some new developments have taken place, and we're in the process of working through those, and the board might hear information or receive information, so like, it would be a covering.
Ms. Director Andrews?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm...
Thank you. Ms. Gina Letz?
Okay, every spring, all administrators come over and they give us, and the key word at that point is preliminary numbers for staffing for the upcoming school year. And at that point, the administration of Northeast Intermediate saw a bubble coming through their elementary theaters for the sixth grade of being beyond the max of capacity. So they foresaw that, so this was, again, we're going back April, May, I'm sorry, actually, March and April, where we presented some of our boundary adjustments that we did, especially one facet was the Audubon Elementary students inadvertently being sent to Northeast, which we caught, we readjusted. So as soon as the Northeast Intermediate Administration foresaw that bubble going into sixth grade of them being over capacity, what we did at that point is send out 18 letters to fifth grade students at Woodyer Elementary to let them know that they will not be going to Northeast Intermediate, that their intermediate school would be South Grand. We were hoping that that would solve the situation for incoming sixth grade at Northeast Intermediate. So the school year ended, and a month, a week after school year, I made sure I made contact all secretarial registration clerks to make sure, to finish up the 17, 18 school year, that the system, the student management system, which we did convert from e-school, we converted to power school, a new system, which we had to work out some kinks, and I'm going to get to in a second on that, to make sure you clean everything up as far as if there's any transfers, get them out, if there's any new entries, get them in, if there's any kind of situations, drops, add, to make sure that preliminary numbered, again, still that preliminary stage was as accurate as possible. So, the key is here, is that traditionally, our rollover, to go from preliminary to actual, the rollover has to take place every single summer. Traditionally, that happens after the Fourth of July. Well, that took place July 16 of this summer. Where the rollover is, if a student... Where the rollover is, if a student automatically in our, in our e-school, which again, we went to a new student management system, to Power School, converted from third grade going to fourth grade, or if they're, if they were in fifth grade going to sixth grade to a new school, or if they're in eighth grade going to ninth grade, to automatically turn the student over to the next grade level, and if they'd be the new school. A week before that, the North-Sprint Intermediate Administration did another wrong with their number count, again, preliminary, this was July tenth. And even with the Woodyer students pulled out, their sixth grade was still at an alarming over, just a, just a little bit over, over the max limit, which we thought we brought it at least maybe fourteen or fifteen down. So in that case, there were still students registering for the next school year. So at that point, we didn't want to do anything official until the rollover officially took place, to go from preliminary to actual status, but we did have discussions, and we actually entertained four different plans, that we were ready to put in effect, until we found out when the dust settled, and what were the actual numbers. Two of those plans involved moving students from housing developments. One plan was taking, chipping away at four different housing developments and students in that surrounding area, or one big one. We weren't, we weren't sure what route we were going to go on until we had the rollover with more concrete numbers. The rollover came and went at that point in July sixteenth, but we did have some troubleshooting with the new student management system, Power School. So we just wanted to do one last ditch effort and ask the principals to run their master schedule, which would be a list of all the courses, when they were offered during the course of the day, their seat count, their tallies. But at that point, we had a little bit of troubleshooting with the new system, and the principals weren't able to run an effective master schedule, until they were called over here by Ms. Barrett, our student management, Director of Student Management System, and our Pings Coordinator. She called them for the intermediate principals to come over last Wednesday to clear up any issues that they had, so they were able to run an efficient master. And they did last Wednesday morning, but the numbers kind of led to the same issue. In addition, if the seventh grade was just about under maximum capacity going into Northeast Intermediate, so it became a two-headed monster at that point. So since the rollover took place, the master glitches were rectified, we decided to put a plan into effect on one of our four plans, one of, one from one of the two that were in the housing developments. And we decided, since it would be one bus being able to pick up these students, one bus that's out would be, we would include the seventh grade also, to give some wiggle room at that point. So at this point, right now, Northeast Intermediate is under in grades six and seven with those changes, and we, we decided to make the move to send these students to West Intermediate, which had room to take these students. We thought, entertained South Intermediate, but they were, they're also very, very tight in grade seven, so we couldn't, we couldn't go South Intermediate because of the situation in grade seven. They have room in grade six, but not grade seven, so we either want to send grade six itself, or grade six, we want everyone to be on the one bus. Further looking at the numbers today, and I want to get a little bit of clarification tomorrow, we may be able to chip away and send, especially the seventh grade, because they already have a year invested at Northeast, get all those students back, and retract that letter, and fix this situation for the seventh grade students, and a good chunk of the sixth grade. So that's where we're at right now. So it was just a tough situation. We did not change any boundaries. We did not change it. This is an overage situation. The housing development will still and always will stay north, boundary to Northeast Intermediate. We need your approval to change any boundaries, like we did some of them this past spring. We're not changing, and that's the way we're relating it to parent. I talked to probably about ten of those families, twenty seven, twenty-eight families were affected, but one, I was talking to Director of Transportation, one was a little bit outside the bus run, so that person, that family was taken off. So we're at twenty-seven families and students that were moved. And probably, I spent my, probably, the whole morning this morning talking to those parents. They were completely understanding, they were devastated, they were, they were, you know, a little bit down, but they, they, we didn't hang up as far as them being upset or irate. They understood our situation.
The bottom line is, you, you may be able to funnel many of these students back into Northeast as the numbers continue to come in.
They change every day.
West Stanton has a lot of room, pretty much. South has room in sixth grade, but not seventh grade. Northeast is, is the one right now that's.
Jammed.
And it's overcrowded, but we see seats opening up, and we will funnel those kids back. So just so you know, it was not a boundary change, it was just because of overage, and if we can't get those students back here on the school, that's our goal.
And the reason why we didn't send out the letters until August first was, we had to wait until the rollover to get from preliminary to actual, and there was glitches with the new system. It's a brand-new system that we implemented, and we had some problems running the master, in which we wanted to see clear cut definite that those numbers were over seat, over capacity. So that's why we waited. And so, again, we had four plans in place, and as soon as I found out what the situation was, and what the plan doctor wants, well, we just sent it right out with the letters that Monday afternoon.
Thank you, Bernie.
How will you determine the order in which the students are coming back?
We talked about that.
We took, we took, oh, what, the order?
To go back.
Oh, okay. Right now, from, again, these aren't clear cut, but I think we can get all the seventh graders back.
So they will all go back?
We think we can get all the seventh graders back. We're still.
We have about five in sixth grade, so we're hoping that in the next week or so, they will, will be able to get all of them back. If not, then we talked about a lottery.
So in total, there was twenty families?
It was twenty-eight, but one, one, one was right outside the bus run, it was like a block or two over, and I talked to Transportation Director today, is this family out of there? She said yes, so I did call that one family back. They were down to twenty-seven. Right, twenty-seven students are being sent to West Intermediate as we speak right now, but hopefully, hopefully, we can get them all back to Northeast, if not, a good chunk.
Twenty-seven in total?
Twenty-seven students.
Hopefully, yes. Hopefully, we could get home back, and then as new ones come in, they will have.
Yeah. As they, as they, they're going to, they're going to be coming in a mad rush, as yet to happen, so we're just going to have, and we had this problem at, at the elementary level last year. We had over fifty students that we could not get into homeschools. We rerouted them to their closest neighborhood sister school as they came in, if they, if their grade levels were at capacity, and all the boundary sections, which were limited right now, were already pulled out, we pulled them out first, but we had that situation last year with elementary students.
All those families came from the same development?
No. This year? No, there were four different developments.
There was four different developments, where that added up to twenty-seven families, so it was, it was like four from one, six from another, eight from another, so that's, that's the route we decided to go with, because it would be, they would all be on the same bus, rather than pick two students from this section, three students from that, and the buses being all over us, plus, you know, plus routes being all over the place.
So hopefully, all, all of the works work with him being, and he'll be able to get them all back where, where we would like them to be in their homeschool. We'll keep you updated. You'll, you'll have more of an update right after.
I don't realize this happens everywhere, this is the first I've hearing this, or this is heard.
Well, really, it's a, it's an issue we don't really bother the board with, it's boundary exception, and we just don't really get into that, but we thought, you know, you might like to know, because you did make boundary changes this year, and we didn't want you to be confused as to what was going on then.
I think that's the thing, is for us to make boundary decisions, that we do need all of the background as we go ahead and try to figure out what we're doing to prevent these things from happening. Also, like to know information, or we hear from parents directly.
And that's why we shared it with you this evening.
Right, but we heard from some parents before this evening, so that's, it's tough on us when we're, we find out after the development.
Well, we're not in real time. We're in real time. We did the best we can.
Special Ed, Special Education Director Olefsky?
I have nothing, but do you, Director? For special education, only what you will be receiving in your next package?
Maybe. That's all. Vocational Education Director Olefsky?
Nothing.
Transportation Director Lush?
Nothing really, but I would like to, again, if you could schedule a transportation committee for next week's event, and over some information we need to gather. But yeah, I would like to do that, and maybe possibly do a special meeting.
All right, we'd be happy to do that.
Val, any, um, Directors have data?
I think on August twenty-seventh, we'll have somebody from the Strand Educational Program Organization come and let us know a little bit about what they do, so that we can understand better how we can move forward and not overlap with their fundraising needs, like the free education.
Yeah. Anyone else?
I have one item, I have a kind of business. Is that a question?
No. That would be a special meeting, right?
After, thank you.
After special.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this. It works out?
A second, Bert. Thank you. Now we're going into the call to order the special meeting for general purposes. Can we just roll right into this, and get some movement, please? Roll call?
Mr. Casey?
Present.
Mrs. Higginson?
Present.
Mr. Duff?
Present.
Mr. Morton? Mr. Bosch?
Here.
Mr. Andrew?
Present.
Mrs. Olefsky?
Present.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Mrs. Casey?
Present.
I am present.
Okay, during this time, we have a few speakers that signed up. Public comment speakers are welcome to speak on agenda and non-agenda items. Board will listen and not respond to any speakers. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person, and each person has one opportunity at the last call. Regardless of minutes on you, due to unused minutes, may now be passed to another speaker. Union and public officials are provided with four minutes. Board Secretary will time the comments and alert the chair when time has expired, and will let you know then if your time has expired and allow you to finish your samples. The board will not allow any derogatory comments or calling anyone today. Thank you. Gerald?
Evan. Good evening, folks, as always. Sure, I have to be my welcome in the official office. I have some really good things to tell you about the year, and the summer, and the events that's been going on. First is our Department of Economic Development has launched more and more of the annual short notice, and we're seeing trends, and we're exploring the application process for the local share account grant funding, which of course is a state program, and we have a lot of experience in these applications. So anyone who wants to report to the administration, or to the community that would be involved in the potential to receive an LC grant for a project or future, is more than welcome to attend. Tomorrow morning, so we have a lot of short notice, they asked for RSVPs, so I just want to be able to call it in detail, before you know it, it's all against you. But it's the first time that I'm aware of, how the government program, if we get questions on LC grants, they're part of this all the time. We're pretty glad to reserve both of our processes. I'm also, this is a program that I'll be screening tomorrow, because I think it's going to square, we have a lot of calls about it. We're driving down to the movie series next two weeks, which is, this is February three, August ninth, and obviously, this is called, the last two social series, hopefully, we'll get good weather, I don't know if we can all screen tomorrow, it's a process where we're posting on social media, if there's a delay, or if there's a cancellation comes home, we try to share that on our social media as well. First, we'll do weather, so it's all for, unfortunately, free, it's only, we've been able to do this. We also have new wire, including new locations, whether it should be additional locations for prescription drug take-back boxes, or apartment electric, and subsequent airbox, for all programs. This is a statewide, now, we now have these drug take-back boxes all over, kind of all the locations, made from all important facilities, but there's been some of which have differed from places, such as pharmacy, pharmacies, in many locations. So there's an obstacle this year. We've done three versions in this wire over the last five years, years, and it's open to the office, and it's ads, or online for the last few years. So we've got opportunities for all, to the schools, for all, and for the traditional stations. So that shows the bulk, on top of COVID, there's a lot of fall, we'll try to, it was the price, thirty-seven, seventy-three million, on the administration. We do two blood drives a year, every year, across both, uh, public donations, we're allowing work in our building, we don't need, uh, we don't need some people to work downtown, so we're not going to, we're not going to, we're going to be more of all, uh, wide appointment with control version, and you just need to be all, uh, all, so we're going to be able to mail it, and I'm not going to, so that's a schedule. We do take walkings, uh, where the water can operate sometimes at times, we're across the, uh, so as we can. When we, to write, if that's the exceptions office, and I want to know, uh, department of spot electric fly issues, it's a lot of, uh, top, uh, point now, spot electric flies are based on estimates, and it hasn't been seen in the black one, coming in, based on harmless improvements, like dogs, and other, uh, projects, which are easy planes that are vital, which are, uh, signed books, uh, sort of, the whole issue is also very important to be clear, our, our, to, we want to report to the state, for the Department of Agriculture, if they want tracking, possibly, portion of the, uh, uh, just, uh, a couple licenses here, parks, department has two golf tournaments, and fall, park, insurance, golf tournaments, a lot of other, uh, offices, so we're going to, that, and this is a really big one, this is not a county run tour, uh, but it's started at Dayton Park, uh, it's part of remembering our fall national report, and we'll link some pictures for this. From September the seventh, we live, uh, this travel, reporting, and displaying at Dayton Park, between, uh, four hours, it pays tribute to more than four thousand seven hundred people, military, people, lives action, this is a type of, uh, tax, and here, we've actually got a couple photos from the service member, they're being ranked in service, uh, for the right, so, so, a really interesting way to pay tribute, so it's going to be, uh, yeah, the other part, for those specific dates, you know, ceremony, quarters, and today, uh, uh, help, uh, for us, so, if you do that, during the fall, out, just to make some progress. So also, we have to get out, uh, we're, we're, we're here for the fall, we have our supermodel there, and our hero there, so we'll be safe there, both from November and September, so we'll get information on that as soon as we can, and then our budget process starts actually now, in terms of the office, but, but, uh, we'll have a tentative budget that's proposed, and we'll, we'll, so, so, we'll, we'll, uh, that, uh, it's going to be closed by the official, uh, this year.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Anna Tye?
I'm just, I'm just, that's for record, so I don't miss anything, but I just wanted to say, it's nice to formally meet everybody on the school board tonight, and I appreciate you listening. My name is Anna Tye, I've been a permanent sub at Spring High School, um, this is school counselor for the past two years. Once I heard the news that the counselor I have been subbing for was now returning, we met the interview, I was over three years old, as of the end of sixteen, seventeen school year, I've been dedicating much time trying to find out how I can be considered or fairly interviewed, or fairly interviewed for this position. Um, when I spoke last summer with personnel, I was told that they were staffing special education, and that they'd get back to me about guidance, and they did get back to me about two weeks later, asking me to sub for the seventeen-eighth school year, which I glad they had launched, too. Um, when I did find out about the full-time position this summer, I was told that if nobody had been into the position, that you would go by the four-year-olds at this point in the list. Um, I couldn't help but to ask myself why, and I just kind of want to shed some light on what this means, what my concerns are as a school counselor, as well as what our concerns are experiencing high school as a guidance department. So, um, it was brought to my attention when personnel did not find us sub, our principal was asked to reach out to the school counselors at Spring High School last year, um, and ask if they knew anybody who was interested in the position. That's how I found out about the position last
made in a lot of facilities, but there's been some of which have different places, such as pharmacy, pharmacies in many locations. So there's not physicalist here. We've done three versions in this wire over the last five years, years, and years, and it's all been the office, on stats, or online for the last few years. So we've got opportunity for all to disclose what we're using, including commercial stations. And that shows that all, on top of COVID, cares, on the part of the fall, we'll try to take less than price, 37 million, 3 million, on the administration. We do two blood drives a year, every year across both, of course, public donations, the large work in our building, building, and the other reason, we're working downtown, so we're coming here to give a commercial building, for the water, water, point of control, which we're urging you to just leave me all, all the issue, so we can mail it from our information, not the whole drive, or the victim, so that we can schedule. We do say walkings, where the water can operate sometimes at times, where across the area, so as much as we can. When we provide the Penn State Sessions Office, that I want to know, department, spot, electric fly issues, is not a way to talk on how, now, spot electric flies, based on estimates, hasn't been seen in the black one, coming in, based on harmless improvements, like dogs, and other, on, lots, trees, planes, that the body was a lot of, signing books, sort of, for the whole issue, is also very important to be clear, our, our, to, we want to report to the state, for the department, agriculture, they want tracking, possibly portioned. But just a couple licenses here, parks, department has two golf tournaments, fall, park, insurance, golf tournaments, a lot of other, on, so we're looking for that. And this is a really important, this is not a telling run toward, but it's started at Dayton Park. It's hard remembering our fall of national report, and we'll link some lectures for this. From September 7th, we live, I was traveling, reporting, and displaying at Dayton Park between 12 hours. I pay tribute to more than 4,000, 700, military, military, life action, this is a type of tax. Here, we've actually got a couple photos from the service member, they have ranked service for the right, so, a really interesting way to contribute, so it's going to be out of the park, for those specific dates, you know, ceremony, quarters, September 8th, and then, help, or support, if you do that, during going to park out, we'll just make those in particles. So also, we have to get out, we may, we're, we're here for the fall, we have our super mother there, and our hero, here, we're going to hold the state fair, both from November and September, so we'll make sure that is as soon as we can. And our budget process starts actually now, in terms of the office, but we'll have a tentative budget that's proposed, this, so, we're going to have that, it's going to be closed by the official for this year. Any questions?
Thank you. Anna Tye?
I'm just, that's for record, so I don't have to say anything. But I just wanted to say it's nice to formally meet everybody on the school board tonight, and I appreciate you listening. My name is Anna Tye. I've been a permanent sub at Scranton High School. I'm a school counselor for the past two years. Once I heard the news that the counselor I have been subbing for was not returning, we met the interview, I was over three years old, as of the end of 16, 17 school year, I had been dedicating much time trying to find out how I can be considered or fairly interviewed for this position. When I spoke last summer with personnel, I was told that they were staffing special education and that they'd get back to me about guidance. And they did get back to me about two weeks later, asking me to sub for the 17, 18 school year, which I glad they had watched too. When I did find out about the full-time position this summer, I was told that if nobody had been into the position, that you would go by the four-year-olds at this point, they would be list. I couldn't help but to ask myself why, and I just kind of want to shed some light on what this means, what my concerns are as a school counselor, as well as what our concerns are at Scranton High School as a guidance department. So it was brought to my attention when personnel did not find a sub, our principal was asked to reach out to the school counselors at Scranton High School last year and ask if they knew anybody who was interested in the position. That's how I found out about the position last year. So I was willing to take this position when people on the list were not. I was lucky enough to start in the summer of the 16, 17 school year with four knowledgeable counselors who were willing to teach me roads and show me everything there was that they do at Scranton High School. So one of those things is the student assistance program, where our principal was kind enough to pay for me to be a part of that team and get the three-day training on a building pedal. If I'm not hired for this position, our team goes from three people to two people. And we've been doing guidance, group counseling with our students. I've been working on a webpage where families and people from the community can put in referrals to, for addressed students, so that we can link the next resources for them. And we've been working with Scranton, Dr. Nambal, as well as, on that student assistance program. We've lost two counselors in our department this year, one who left in May. She wasn't replaced with a sub because we heard that personnel could not find a sub who was interested in taking the position. So I've been watching as the positions I work so hard to be considered for have been filled up, and I know there's a third opening, it's in my school, that probably won't come until the end of August, so it seems like it must be bad. So as far as I know, that hasn't been filled yet. But that means if somebody else takes my spot, we have two counselors who are going to be in charge of training three new counselors in the May of the year, which is where we're probably at the craziest. We have students and families lined up from our office to the hall back. So I just feel like it's a great service for our students, old and new, families, as well as our faculty. I finally become familiar with my case load of students. I made a database out of scratch of all...
I have to ask you to finish that.
Sure.
Okay. No, you can finish what you're saying.
Okay. Just 400 students, and I have a database of all of them, when I met them, what their academic needs are, what their personal needs might be, as well as their career orientation goals. So I just wanted to throw that out there and let you know that I am just an institution that have been working diligently over the past two years.
Thank you. That's very well.
Good evening, school directors. I'm going to follow up on what Ann just talked to you about. You see, decisions have consequences. And the reason the school board of the city of Scranton held interviews every three years is to give new students graduating from college an opportunity to be interviewed and get on the hiring list here. The list we currently have is old, and most likely, the people on it are old swear, they're not waiting around here for us to recall them and say, come on down to Scranton's board. So now we have a shortage of counselors. But the unfairness is to this woman who has been serving this district diligently, and just so happens she's not on the hiring list because she has never had an opportunity to be interviewed, to be on the hiring list at the city of Scranton. So I urge you to pay attention to the fact that this district traditionally held interviews every three years. And when a list is depleted, we have to actually interview perhaps in the middle. You know, you're not just going to get physics teachers, you're chemistry teachers, or specialty teachers like that, if you don't have the names on the list, they're not waiting around. Shop teachers are hired before they even leave the college. If five graduate, they're hired before they get out of school. So when you lay off or get rid of any industrial arts teachers, good luck finding a replacement. You're not going to, because you can't get them. They're gone before they leave the college. So we have to think about this, and we have to start to recognize that we've had people in this district, there are professionals and teachers, subbing for multiple years and never getting an opportunity to get hired by this district, and that's just plain wrong. If somebody could work for us for three, four, and five, and six years as a substitute, don't they deserve a job interview since they've been performing for 185 days satisfactorily? And they're excluded from employment in this district because why? Well, that why has to be addressed, and it should be addressed yesterday, because we're losing very talented people, and we're not going to get them back. And this is an ongoing problem. It's the problem the previous board had to deal with, and now it's I who be dealing with it. It's a very serious issue. I want to address you, Director Duffy, I'm glad to hear that you're still plumbing away with the Harrisburg situation. I'm hoping we're going to hear some good news shortly, and we'll find out about that almost within a week. However, that doesn't excuse the fact that we're going to be starting the school this September, and everything in our district has now changed, and you heard Mr. General Letzus speak to the fact that we haven't even had the August rush on this building to register students. So I would ask you to pay strict attention to the beginning of school. Everybody hopes that things will run smoothly, but we know what the beginning of school looks like. Those of us who do it, you know what it looks like. And I'm just explaining to you what it looks like at Scranton High School, I dare say it's going to affect that most everyone else in the city of Scranton. We do want to have a successful beginning, that's our goal. However, we are realists, and I think you all have to be too. I listen to, I know you argued one night about shall and should. Tense is great, but we need to argue more about what's going on in our schools and our classrooms and support that we need to get funding into this Scranton school district. I think we can figure out the shall we would, shall wouldn't could, whatever the heck the word is that you're having issue with. We could get a dictionary, Webster, American Heritage, knowing the word tense is on. But we've got to pay attention to the fact that we're starting this district out in September, and it's a whole new ballgame here, and it's an unknown ballgame, and it's going to be very interesting to watch the first few months of school this September. And I encourage you to get involved. And then I have one little issue to take up the volume. I think that you do not realize that when you speak in this room, we cannot hear you. We cannot. So either A, microphones have to be used, and you have to speak louder, or when you don't have a microphone, you have to speak louder, because we really cannot hear what's being said in this, in this question, in this room. So please try and help us out with that. We're trying to take notes, and we're trying to do notes at the same time, so it's difficult. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Marie Schumacher?
Yes, I would like to, that was a good segue to do, because one of the things I had, and a question to ask you all, whether I dare trust that functioning microphones are included in your budget for this year. It's very frustrating to come here and not be able to hear a word that was said, I didn't hear a word Gerald said, I mean, the speakers, if you want them to come and input, you have to let everybody hear what they're saying. The other thing is, I hope that we can be reassured that the preliminary budget will be online, and we don't have to make a trip downtown to see the budget, and a copy will be put in the Albright Library preference section, so people who want a little bit of hard copy have that available. And then I would like to also request, since this would be the first year, that any savings in the budget from shared services with the city of Scranton or any other governmental facility is be highlighted in some manner. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment. And Director Tavden, please.
To the members of the board of directors, the school district of the city of Scranton, it is the recommendation of superintendent and the budget finance committee to call on resolution to consider listed payments in accordance with the bill payment approval policy be approved as already attached. I move that orders be drawn on Treasury of Cogos, August 6, 2018, $790,750, and respectfully, so.
Second. Other question? Roll call.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuthbert?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
I have a statement this morning. On. I'm just going to, to the service manager.
Mrs. Schutzmann? Data, affirmative, motion.
To the members of the board of directors, the school district of the city of Scranton, it is the recommendation of superintendent and the budget finance committee to call on resolution to consider. The exception bill is as per the bill payment approval policy for the period ended August 6, 2018, be approved as already attached. Be it resolved that exception payments in the amount of $5,806,664,40, subject paid in accordance with the approval payment policy. Be it resolved that payrolls amounting to $8,652,558,75, subject paid in accordance with the approval payment policy. Respectfully, so.
Second. Other question? Roll call.
Mrs. Cuthbert?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Have a statement.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Would you like to know why?
Yes.
There's a payment to an organization to which my mother serves as the secretary.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes.
Mrs. Olefsky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Schutzmann? Seven, affirmative, one of essential motion. Mr. Casey, can I come in?
Yes.
To the members of the board of directors, the school district of the city of Scranton, superintendent of schools, and the budget finance committee presents the following resolution for your consideration. It involves the link with tax report in the month of June 2018, be accepted as follows in detail in the basic review in the business office. But that's the district this 467,468,75. I think so.
Second.
Other question? Roll call.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes.
Mrs. Olefsky?
Yes.
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 Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuthbert?
Yes.
So that said, that would be available in the business office for Ms. Schumacher, is that right? For your request to have the budget in the library, is that something that the school district has something to do?
Yeah, we will include it online, and there's also the resolution will state that we include it in the secretary's office, and we can have it library as well as.
That was expressed in my mind, that the link with tax reports available there, but the budget itself will be available in the library as well as the business office.
We'll do that.
We would have somebody taking the budget over to the library, and last year and the year before, you were willing to come to do it, and she was new. So maybe, perhaps that's why you might need to get it to the library. Normally, we do it up there long, so it has been online, I believe.
All right, so these four, repository sales, for tip, add the second piece that you see this morning. So it's a big time to add the facts from I want to say, from August, the 10:33 AM.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuthbert?
Yes.
So resolution, members of the board, school directors of the city of Scranton, it is the recommendation of superintendent and the budget finance committee to file a resolution to prove. Whereas in accordance to the real estate tax law, any property not sold at judicial sale shall be listed in our repository as old properties. The following properties, if sold, will be returned to tax-making status and protect the zero. There are three addresses at Mulan Avenue. There are additional addresses, Knight 65, Cliffs Road, 1423, Pass Avenue, 834, Madison Avenue, 324 South Knight Avenue, and 424 Southwest Avenue. Therefore, be it resolved that the school district of the city of Scranton does hereby approve the above recorded properties for repository sale pursuant to the real estate tax sale law in section 627 of that act. This resolution is subject to the approval of other tax authorities, respectfully, so.
Other question? Roll call.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes.
Mrs. Olefsky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuthbert?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Olefsky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuthbert?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Olefsky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuthbert?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Olefsky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuthbert?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Olefsky?
Yes.
These six, superintendent of schools and budget finance committee present the following resolution for your consideration. Be it resolved the present report to the period ended June 18, be accepted as follows the balance of general account, $30,877,988,98. Respectfully, so.
Sir.
Other question? Roll call.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes.
Mrs. Olefsky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuthbert?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mrs. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuthbert?
Yes.
These seven, all the example here, one with the red top, and then, to the members of the board, school directors, the city of Scranton, superintendent and the budget finance committee present the following resolution for your consideration. Whereas the special session, special session Act 1 of 2006 established a timeline of events related to calendar year school district voting process, whereas the timeline established a deadline of August 8, 2018, to adopt in 2019 for the budget. Whereas board of directors obligation to, obligation to vote is dependent on the board's intention to consider a tax increase above the Act 1 index established by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and includes the requests of exceptions to Act 1, Department of Education. And now therefore be it resolved that the board of directors of the school district of the city of Scranton hereby approve the 2019 preliminary budget with the real estate tax rate of 138.37 mils with all other taxes remaining at the current level. The board authorizes district administration to seek approval from the Department of Education for any exceptions to Act 1 that the district may be entitled to. Be it further resolved that copies of the preliminary budget as adopted be made available for public inspection to the office of the secretary of the school board and the district website, and the board of school directors said officers shall advertise the action hereby taken in accordance with law, be subjected to approval of all documentation that the district solicitor, respectfully, so.
Sir.
Other question?
I just have a other question, to make my friendly remark, I meant to also make that available at the Albright Library. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Olefsky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuthbert?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, further clarification. Would you tell us if the audit for last year is complete, and you're using that to do the budget? Can we throw that to?
The 2017 audit is not complete. It's typically our timeline is concluded by the end of September. What we are using is our current actual budget from 2018, and any estimated increases or decreases to various actions stated throughout the year to make those suggestions.
We have to hold on the original motion now.
Yes, so I just have a question. Reiterate the conversation we had after work session. This is to enable the administration to seek approval for this from the Department of Education. This is not the board's way to access this, right? So that you might have that option available to us, but this is just the very first part of the process to give us many options.
Do we have a second this?
Second.
Just one.
Another question.
Other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuddington?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
To the members of the board of school directors of the city of Scranton, the superintendent and the budget finance committee present the following resolution for your consideration. Whereas the public school code of 1949 amended allows for a budget transfer for more classification and expenditure to another by the board of directors in the last nine months of the fiscal year if it is apparent that a necessary surplus fund, that necessary surplus funds do exist, another appropriation. And whereas the Scranton School District adopted Board College 612 that establishes the guidelines for reporting such necessary budget transfer to the board of directors. And now therefore be it resolved that the proposed budget transfer request be approved as per the attached, respectfully submitted.
Other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuddington?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Director Casey?
J1, members of the board of school directors of the city of Scranton, it is the recommendation of superintendent and personnel committee to attach the listed appointments, qualifications, and needs to the assets of the district. Employees are affected by the fine received profit from criminal records, corporation, and medical insurance. Salaries are in the process of collecting agreements, respectfully submitted.
Second. Other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Danner. We're not, to replenish the list, we have interviews to happen in the future or in the next year.
We do not have interviews scheduled to do a whole redo of the list, because having furloughs this year, we're drawing from them. We did do interviews for, we'll see on here, there's biology and French. Those were, the list was exhausted. We need to interview applicants who apply to those areas. Have we identified other areas in the future that we're going to need to? As Mrs. Bullard said, industrial arts could always use. There are still, the majority of the subject areas still have names on the list. There are some that are depleted, for example, French biology.
Okay, guidance, where are we on that?
Guidance? If you notice, there's three on here that came from the list. There probably is two left. We've gotten some no's. I still need, I still need one more guidance.
We're looking for Lincoln Jackson, please, for seat. Is that, that's an additional?
That's an additional one, yes. Apparently, there's two guidance positions. There's three on here, there's one more to be filled.
And two more on the list.
One more to be filled, meaning Lincoln Jackson.
Yes, I can move them around, but yes.
Okay.
And two on the left.
I'm off the top of my head, two to three names probably left.
Have yet to be called for reading?
Yes. Last one called to Klein, we're moving down this.
Maybe I don't work in the research department, so maybe on top of that, we can discuss the, 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 the,[1418.12]